Let me know when you're good.
People, good?
Sit on your back deck. So you're not...
Hi, I would like to welcome everybody to the March 24th City of Idaho Springs Work Session. We only have two items and the first one is the downtown Minor Street Market Activation. Sadie, thank you very much for being with us.
Hi, thank you Mayor.
Yeah, yeah, so please take it away.
Awesome. Thanks Mayor and Council and staff. I appreciate you guys hosting me via Zoom today and having me back to talk about Minor Street. I had a very productive meeting with Guy and Wonder to kind of finalize a few things which was really helpful. I appreciate your guidance previously about going ahead and continuing to waive the $150 encroachment fee. Minor Street is pretty similar to years in the past. What we are doing this year is putting in a little bit more of a design standard review process for the encroachment agreements on Minor. We have added something in the encroachment agreements that says that encroachment agreements need to... agreements need to be fully submitted for approval this year, since we did ask for everybody to remove their stuff. We're going to have another review. And in that, we've also included that we would like some historic elements present in their design. I will be going around to each one of the businesses and kind of giving them examples of what that means. You know, wheels, barrels, hemp rope, kind of trying to elevate some of the designs from the past that have been not quite up to standard. As a lot of the encroachment areas have been improving year over year, we have a few people, we just want to give them some extra motivation. So we've included that in the application. And I'm really appreciative of Wonder and staff for helping put that together. The board is recommending that we start opening Minor or closing Minor to traffic a little bit earlier this year. It has been the wish of the businesses. We understand that there could be weather. The businesses are fully willing to remove snow out of their areas if needed. However, we're suggesting that we close to traffic the week of April twenty eighth, weather dependent. Street cleaning focused on April twenty ninth and thirtieth, and then with that first part of May, the first through the eighth, focus on activating, building their spaces with the first full weekend being May ninth. And it's a little bit about one week earlier than we traditionally do it. We'd just like to get a little head start on it this year. Everybody's anxious to get started. So that's something we would like Council's blessing on. Of course, this would be a weather dependent decision. If we're coming towards the end part of April and beginning of May, and we're expecting a bunch of snow, we might want to just roll that back a little bit. But with weather being good, we'd like to proceed with that. Same closure or reopen date right after Halloween, giving people enough time so that by the first part of November, we will be open up to one way traffic again. We're hoping to implement the new pedestrian zone signs on the barrier with this transition. I know those have been ordered, and we're just looking at Public Works to get those installed on the barriers. They're a more friendly pedestrian zone instead of the big do not enter signs on all of the barriers. So those are some improvements we'll see to Minor Street this year. We have added four events to Minor Street this year that will be cosponsored and run. Adding four from the two that we've done previously. Last year, we did Furlings Fest in Fourth of July. This year, we're also adding some block party events with some small activation and some music. One each month, starting in July, rotating blocks. And then the Fall Harvest Festival, which will be a Taste of Idaho Springs event September twenty seventh. The Furlings Fest and the Fall Harvest Festival are cosponsored with businesses. So we have headliner businesses that are going to be helping us run this event as well as market and make them bigger and better than each year. We have really not added a ton of other activation to Minor this year. I'm going to continue with the adding additional non-competitive minor vendors. We had a great success on that last year. So I really appreciate Council's guidance on that. We got a lot of really great feedback. We will continue that this year through a vendor's temporary permit that they'll fill out. They will be, again, non-competitive vendors on Minor, and they'll be able to commit to the summer and get on a schedule. I already have quite a few vendors that are interested for attending most of the summer, if not all summer weekends, which is awesome. We have a full Fourth of July calendar this year. I think really the only thing I need Council guidance on everything else, I've kind of gone through with city staff and figured out kind of where we're going, is just if you guys are comfortable with the April, first part of May, April transition date.
Well, let's go around. I think you probably would like guidance on one other thing, but let's, let's talk about this April startup date. Jeremy, you okay? Okay? Good? All right.
I do have one question.
Yeah.
Sadie, in the past, I think we tried to do the closure on Monday, do the street cleaning, and then the open that weekend. Was there a desire to extend that transition period? I realize, again, you mentioned weather, and certainly that's a variable this, you know, that time of year. But would, would you like to try to do it all in one week like we've done in the past? Or is there a reason to extend it a little longer?
I think the reason to extend it a little longer is that we do have some bigger encroachment agreements that take a little bit more time to build. And I'd like to give them a little bit more time before we advertise as our first official weekend open. Obviously, the first weekend in May, the streets will be closed, and some people will already have their encroachments done. The easy ones that are, you know, retailers, some of the smaller patios will probably be done. But I would really like to give some of our bigger restaurants a little bit more time to make sure that their spaces are fully ready before I start advertising that it's open, being that the first weekend I would advertise it open would be the ninth of May, or that, yeah, that ninth of May weekend.
So really, it's really dependent on a particular business. And that first weekend, we could have a number of.
There's a moose in my front yard right now. I apologize. They will go crazy for the mooses. I apologize.
So that first weekend, there could be a number of businesses that are all set up and ready to go. But perhaps Bojos might be still putting together their big deck maybe a little more times, Harry?
Yeah, I would say Bojos. I know Tommyknockers is doing a little bit more this year. I know that Mountain Prime wants to do a little bit more this year. So some of the bigger restaurants I know are putting a little bit more time in. They kind of were hoping for a little bit more of a window before we started advertising it being fully open. However, you're correct, Andy. I do think that first weekend in May, the first, second, third of May, there will be businesses that have their encroachments up and ready to go.
Okay, thank you.
Sadie, just one more thing. There had been a request on the encroachment hundred and fifty dollar fees, at least until, like, seven, it gets back to normal, that the city waived those. We had done that, you know, last year, for example. And I, I assume that's still something we'd like to get to the bottom of. I've got to go around the room just to have a council weigh in on their feelings for that.
Yeah, absolutely. We had already waved in on that on last work session.
Oh, I apologize.
So, and Council had said that they were comfortable. So we did as staff.
The encouragement agreement. Better than long. I appreciate it.
Yeah. So these were my only real items I needed support on, unless there's any questions or concerns from Council that you'd like to make sure.
Hey, Lisa, I have one.
I do have one. Some of the things that I've heard from some of the business owners, and you may have heard this as well, when you said you're going for more of a historic aesthetic look for the various activation spaces, are we going to, are we moving toward the direction where everyone has to be somewhat similar, where it looks a little more cohesive?
Yeah, I think that the goal is when we are going through the redesign of Minor Street, looking at very similar style parklets or encroachment areas. Till then, you know, we are asking the businesses to put this, all this expense out there. So we're asking them to kind of be a little more individual at this time. But that is the goal long term, to move it to more of a standardized design, which will take a significant investment. So we might be looking at a partnership between city and business, or maybe some grant funding, because those parklet consistent designs are rather expensive. I know the mayor has had several conversations with Maud Design. They're a designer in Colorado that came out of COVID, and they designed these beautiful parklet spaces that you can really customize to be unique to your space. However, they are definitely a pricey choice.
Yeah, good question, Lisa. Those folks are out of Drango, if I remember right.
Correct.
Well, the other question that I've gotten is, I know last year that we approved Tommyknockers being bigger because the Senior Center was okay with seating some of their area. And one of the questions that I got over the last month was, you know, is, does that work for the fire department? I said, it does work for the fire department. But if we're going to see more of that this year, I think we have to be, I don't know, like, I think it's something that we have to keep an eye on, you know, so that the fire, the fire truck isn't doing a serpentine weaving to get through all of the various, you know, exceptions.
Exactly. Which is why we're asking this year for every single encroachment to submit a new design, to make sure that we're being very considerate. And all of those designs will go through staff and through fire to make sure that fire is comfortable, if there's any kind of exception. In years past, we have just said to businesses, if nothing changes, just send us an email that says nothing changed. This year, however, we're asking for a full design resubmitted so that we can make sure that all of those are marked. And I believe if I, staff and I kind of thought, if there's anything that we feel like we need additional guidance on, we'll bring it back to Council and say, hey, how are you guys feeling about this? Is this too many exemptions? Are you feeling like we're doing something? But our goal is to maintain fire access in a lot of clarity, make sure the center, we are doing a little bit more activation down the center of Minor this year, such as parades and burrows. So we are going to be pretty strict about that center corridor this year.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Sadie? All right. Sadie, thank you very much. Great work.
Thank you, Council. Have a wonderful evening.
Okay, next up, the comprehensive plan update. We're going to look at a timeline process and kick off. Dylan, thank you.
Yep. And Maria, if you want to come up and add anything, feel free, but otherwise I can handle it. All right. So this has kind of been in the works since I got here, because the first day I started the job, Andy and John Kane said, hey, we're going to need to update this ASAP, because it's outdated. So now we're ready to actually do so. And I think this is a good time to do so, because the state's actually requiring by the end of next year to have several new elements in the plan that we don't already have. And if we'd already started the process, it would be more difficult to do it. So this update is really just to provide kind of, this is what we think is the plan going forward, and make sure that Council's on board with us pursuing this direction. Essentially, similar to twenty seventeen, we think we can do is update in-house, using Maria's services, myself. And now we've got on board where it was last time, when it was done in-house, it was really just Alan, Keith and Buck.
Yeah.
And he did the majority of the work. So this time, we have a much larger staff, and there's more resources from DOLA and the like. So essentially, what we're proposing is in about, I don't know, let's say, ten months to twelve month process, where we really kick off strong with community engagement, that I think was sort of a, made not a weakness, but there was not as much as guidance would suggest. You'd have what was done last time. So Maria and I have worked on some strategies already, some, some initial sort of branding efforts and the like. And believe that, you know, that might be a few month process before we even start drafting any new language or ideas or things going forward. With, I guess, any direction from Council, our plan is to kick this off with a small updates at the upcoming community meetings, April tenth and April seventeenth, that Business Community Promotion Board is sort of hosting. I think it's a good opportunity to kind of have just like stationed there, give a little plug, say, we're really kicking this off. Here's a survey. Here's, you know, kind of the background of why we're doing it. Those were quite well attended last time. And then we kick it off with the coppers or comprehensive plan community meeting at the end of next month, last April. Then from there, we'll just, we'll do the process. And so I don't, a whole lot else to, to say, you know, there's quite a lot in the reports. But I guess the requests that I would have is, is Council comfortable with us moving forward, kind of as described above, mostly in-house, but at leveraging, you know, opportunities and our budget where possible. And then, you know, is there any other feedback? And then are we broadly kind of like the direction on branding to hopefully get people excited and have an attractive process?
Well, Don, I'd like to go around the room with the question. Jeremy, I'll start with you. Are you comfortable in the direction we're taking?
Yeah, it's the direction I can give more community engagement.
Yep, very good. Janine?
Yeah. Is there, like, going to be, I don't know, community fatigue in the community meetings earlier in April than also starting this in April?
Well, I did have a slight concern about that, because initially, I had started planning this timeline before I knew there'd be those two kind of community update meetings. But I will say, those community updates are quite, I guess, they're not incredibly focused, but they are sort of focused on key elements and gets people talking. I think after the first two community meetings that were back in December, January, there's a lot of, there was kind of a flurry of activities. So I think that could be potentially a good thing, because then people will come and really get feedback about future direction.
Yeah, and I apologize, none of the dates in front of me, but I think we're going to have one on the tenth and then on the seventeenth.
Yep.
So my guess is that may fire off some discussion, just from the one we have on the tenth, probably drum up even more interest for the seventeenth.
That, that's the hope. And so to answer the question, I was a little concerned, you know, are people going to attend those two meetings and say, I don't, I don't want to attend another meeting? But I do think it could kind of kickstart the process for some folks.
Yeah.
And are you requesting feedback on these five names suggested right now?
Um, yeah, if you have a, we, we thought, when we were talking with DOLA last week, they said, we really ought to have sort of a name. Last time, we had a vision Idaho Springs, which is kind of boilerplate, that I've seen five or six different plans just in the last week that have that name. So we said, we've got to come up with a good name, because they say that's hopeful. So we came up with, you know, Elevator Springs, or Unhearing Opportunity, Planning for Gold.
Yes.
Which I thought was quite funny.
That is a good.
That's a good one.
Vision twenty forty, which is much less exciting, but.
I like Planning for Gold.
All right. Let's not be modest, we came up with Planning for Gold.
Well, Maria and I started with ChatGPT as for days, and we'll talk about that.
All right. Well, I like it particularly with the, the logo. I like that logo.
Well, I don't want to sign Maria up for anything that she can't validate, but she came up with that kind of initial logo. And I think there's opportunity to build off that for more sort of.
I like that with the name of Gold. I'll say it. I don't care if there's a little bit of cheese in there, because it's a smidge, but I like it because.
Present company, except.
Well, we, we were the, we were the gateway for Gold here in Colorado, where the people stopped, while we had a California. So I don't care what Centrist cities is.
All right. Kate?
How much of it are you scrapping and rebuilding from? I mean, retaining any of this stuff? I don't really care, because.
Sure.
Comp plan was like way over mine.
Well, I really think, like, that's the key, talking with DOLA again, because a few people expressed some surprise, they're like, giving it in-house, that's really rare. And we said, well, we have such a good foundation.
Because Alan did a good job, and Jim did a good job before him, yeah.
I, I very much agree. And so I wouldn't call it a rewrite at all. It's more of an update. And so I will say, if you go through the existing comprehensive plan and look at most of the objectives, a lot of them are quite broad objective for housing. For example, maintain a diverse and affordable housing stock. That's clearly something that we'll continue forward forever. But there are a lot of specific things that you kind of said, we want to work on these things. And a lot of those, I'd say seventy-five percent maybe, have either been achieved or are no longer relevant, or, and a lot has happened in the last eight years, you know, you didn't have, there weren't really plans for like a downtown parking structure, mobility improvements that came after. And but it was discussed in here, how we can really build on that.
That's awesome.
There was never a consideration of COVID happening and the marketplace and all of that. And so, and I think it was just kind of in the infancy of the East End overlaying, kind of thinking about how to redevelop that. So we have a lot to build off there.
On that note, is there any like sidebar to, if we have another pandemic, here's what we did that was successful the first time? Maybe keep that in there just as a little history?
Yeah, I mean, Guy had mentioned, when we first talked about it, kind of adding a whole new section, kind of of what has happened since twenty seventeen, and how we responded to things since twenty seventeen, and where can we go from there? But an, an entire kind of element on. But and that, an entire kind of element on emergency preparedness.
I think it's a great idea.
It's a lot of community to do it as they have a standalone emergency plan, and I believe we have.
We do have one.
We have one, it's, I'm sure, ripe for update. Um.
Could it be a part of that document? So it's all in one place. It's also just historic information, like, you know, sometimes it gets forgotten.
Yeah, that is a, that is a great point.
Yeah.
And, you know, sometimes you just luck out, and then we started this with this six foot uh between tables, right? So that prompted us to move some things outdoors, so they didn't lose so many tables. And then that proved to be so popular that even after the pandemic, we still do it today.
It was popular in the winter. I love the ice tents. Like, I did, I like those a lot. If we told, if we closed that full time and say put an ice tent out there, I would totally be supportive of that.
Yeah.
I thought that was negative, but it was also.
Yeah.
What, no, it just wasn't a negative thing.
No, I mean, there, there, we just went to a restaurant out in Grand Junction where like twenty, you know, twenty ice igloos are outside. And you, that's where everybody wants to sit on the rooftop in an igloo. It's actually hotter than hell, by the way.
Has uh anybody been out to Little Ten and the melting pot?
Oh, that's awesome.
Cause they have a bunch of those see-through clear.
Yeah, same thing.
Outside, yeah.
Yeah, and like, light lights inside, yeah, like. Yeah, be careful of those metal skewers though, you can take out an igloo really fast.
Yeah, oh yeah, right, uh, that's, yeah.
Yeah, that's a, I think that's a great idea and something I will add as sort of the additional element. And it may build on counties have the mitigation plan and the wildfire plan, but I think. Jeremy, do you know, was that revised last year? They had talked about.
Uh, it's about to be updated. We just signed on and say we would commit to the process for updating the mitigation plan.
So we might be able to kind of piggyback on that quite a bit then, which.
I, and I'm not asking you do more work, it just seems like a good.
Well, if we're going to do all of this work anyway, we might as well do a couple of work, I guess.
And do it while it's still fresh in your mind, that you went through with the whole COVID thing, right?
Well, I think COVID really brought out a lot of innovation.
It was a lot of, I, I actually could use pandemic right now.
Stop it, you just shush over there, it's time for Mary.
Hey, I'm only to take out food, I don't carry you.
Lisa, your thoughts?
Um, I like this. I didn't realize that doing it in-house was not usually the norm. But I do think we have a good foundation, our, our twenty seventeen comprehensive plan. It's pretty good. I think you could get definitely updates and more specific.
Yeah.
Because our, if you look at the differences from what they were looking at in that plan to right now, our, our focus. What do we have to address has changed, you know, not just because of COVID, but we didn't know that seventy was gonna be the never-ending story.
Yeah.
You know, and that we will do our own update at the same time as however long this is gonna take.
Well.
Like, what are they saying now? Five years now? Eight years?
You mean total I seventy construction? I, I'm hearing four more.
Yeah, I, I mean, I was in a technical team meeting last week and they said that their goal was to have all of the. I seventy improvements done by end of twenty twenty-eight, but that, for example, the US six connector road. Could lead into twenty twenty-nine.
And, and by the way, not to get off on a tangent, but just because it really is important to our business community. Uh, you know, as well as visitors, they say it's gonna impact rafting season, they're gonna have to hold them up. At the game check station, and you know, they go slowly, so I.
Because they're still doing the rock blasting, because the rock blasting was supposed to be done initially, you know, then.
I, I know, yeah.
Right, and they're anticipating because they say the forty-five minute delay is typically because. People back up and then they have to get through, so they think with rafting, it's only maybe ten or fifteen minute holds, but then. You know, they'd have to stop in the netty or pull off to the side or something.
I think there's exactly the same. Pull over, get out, get a beer.
We did twin tunnels, can we go around?
No, we did, but we did the same thing during twin tunnels, so we shut down rafting in twin tunnels. They held for less, it's exactly the same procedure in the same adies, the same place this time. And we act like results can, it's not. Rafting survived that with no real issues, no long-term effects. So they'll survive the blasting with no long-term effects, and the end, the end goal of this, especially when we talk, when we talk about rafting. What better access to the river once the project is done, we're never had. And all the issues that rafting has currently, like you can't get out on the river left by the highway, all that goes away when the project is over. So it's safer for rafting in the end, better access in the end, more eddies and everything in the end. We just have to survive the next four years and not be like around town.
Jeremy, I don't remember, do they have longer condo loans of rats?
Well, that's part of the issue is the rafting companies are maximizing the tours.
Hmm.
So we used to see six and seven raft would be max, now we're seeing a ten, so. Yeah, they're, they're maximizing their money per hour, like, I can't, and they won't do it, but. That's also a choice on their part too, so.
Yeah.
This is kind of a blend here.
Alright, Dylan, uh, anything more?
Um. I, I don't think so.
Uh, would you like to discuss uh quadratic equations?
No.
Alright, um, then I.
There's a couple things I might add. Uh, what is, um, or maybe I still wanted to mention, you wanna mention about the survey component? That's a, that's an added element of the comp plan update is uh.
I'm sure.
Well, and that was included in the packet, I'm fairly certain. We kind of have a list of. Draft survey questions that very, that are very general, you know, quite high level to start, you know, and you'd say. Well, we're just gonna give this very, very basic, high-level feedback to start, and then as we move forward. Um, I'm kind of anticipating a few forums, and then they have the Carlson Elementary Forum that occurred back at the end of last year. Where we have maybe three or four topics mediated by staff for, you know, planning commission, that sort of thing, and we. Really get feedback on different issues um related to housing, related to transportation. Uh, tourism and trails and the like, and that, and then all of that, we could build on some specific surveys at those events.
Since we do have a minute, may I ask, Dylan, how much input are you asking for from the community out of curiosity? Because I don't recall us actually getting a whole lot of, so don't feel bad. I don't remember a whole lot of people growing up.
Sure, well, the comprehensive plan is supposed to be community-driven. We're really saying, what does the community want and what does the community need and what are their missions and goals?
Narrow those questions down, please. So like, out of these three choices, what is your favorite? What is your second favorite? What is your favorite?
Well, I think that's always is a challenge, is you get a lot of feedback and then someone says, well. We don't wanna see a single thing change ever again. Um, and there's probably a, that will probably come up in the survey and in any meeting that ever happens about the subject. But as long as we get these broad, on the subject of transportation, we would really like to see. This and this and this are, are dreams, you can hopefully come to some broad, general conclusions.
I, I'm actually being sort of facetious, but I'm really not. I mean, I'm really saying narrow their, their answers down. Because what actually happened, and I think the school meeting was about Carlson was a prime example. You ask people very broad questions about what they see, and in that particular meeting, lo and behold, we found out that the choice was already made. And so you just piss people off. To me, it's like, you know, and you could take some information from that exact meeting, because there, the, the question was asked. What do you wanna see at Carlson anyway, in that corner, and that might give you some clarity, like, you know, maybe we narrow that, that down. But we already know that from Sadie's meeting and Chuck's meeting and Andy's meetings, it's housing and things like that. I'm just asking, it, just like with the playground.
Right.
The, you know, the wish list is, people can come out up with some very, very huge things that are just impossible.
Yeah, that's true. I think setting set parameters kind of opens actually. Because the other thing I think is important to know is that state has some clear. Housing goals, especially, you know, another thing that we as a region, I guess you'd say we'll have to do by the end of next year. Is a housing needs assessment. We have one from twenty eighteen, they've said you need to do one by the end of next year. And you can't, and that's totally data-driven, where they say you need X number of units at this AMI and X at this AMI and. You need to figure out a way to do it, and so then the build-off of that is you need a housing action plan by twenty twenty-eight, and the point of all that is to say. If your housing needs assessment says you need housing and the state says you have to figure out how to build more housing, it's not a. Do we need housing? It's more where is housing actually appropriate?
I mean, we've got a little extra twist that we share with Gilpin County, and that is we have about two thousand five hundred seniors. And that aspect is growing so, so much uh drastically that more than uh babies. We're just not having babies, so uh that graph looks like the business end of a hockey stick. I mean, of, of, of older folks in Gilpin and Third Creek, because we're tired. Um, but so many of them, ten percent of them are about two hundred and fifty of them live in abject poverty. I'm talking about federal-qualified poverty, and you know, it's hard at that age to recover. I mean, if you, you only have a nine hundred dollar social security check kind of thing, so.
Yeah.
What Dylan is talking about, uh, housing, and I agree, the state broadly talks about that, that we've got. A real crisis brewing with our elderly, and then like where, you know, there, there's very limited uh options and.
Well, and so Kate, your point is exactly right, that if you say, do you want housing, people would just say no, it's more like.
What kind?
Yeah, what kind of housing and where might be appropriate and pointed out on a map and those sorts of things to, to recognize. Things will change because things change whether you plan for it or not, so we have to plan for it, the state requires us to plan for it.
Right.
But also it's in our best interest.
I, I think just being, you know, to use this kind of overused term, but just transparent, telling people. What the, you know, what, what the comp plan essentially is, is it's a plan, not necessarily carved in stone. Um, there's a little bit of a wish list in there. Um, not many of the wishes come true, so be, you know.
But we did too, if you look at the comprehensive plan, we did a lot of wishes.
But you know, you have to remember that comp plan was, I was on the planning version, it was made to be accessible and attainable.
Okay.
You know what I mean? Like, so we weren't looking at it like going, hey, we're gonna do some crazy-ass stuff, we're gonna, we're gonna get the lowest hanging fruit. Which that was a term that we used constantly, so that's why it was probably more, you know.
Well, that's, that's, I think it's a realistic, but what I was gonna say too is, you, you know, you were very right, people were pissed after that school board meeting. Because they had already made a decision, and I was curious, but one thing that I saw was that there were a lot of people who wanted senior housing.
Yeah.
Like, I saw that in all the groups of people, you know, there was a strong contingent for that every, every, you know, discussion.
Well, it also opened, I mean, senior, senior housing opens up other housing, you know, so it makes sense for us to have that. Consolidated where we can take care of each other.
Because I, I do hear a lot of talk about horrible housing, you know, especially at the state. And there's hundreds of millions of dollars, uh, at least right now, uh, to go towards it. But you, you don't hear a lot of a breakout of, like, with, with senior housing, which is affordable housing.
Hmm, but we also need affordable housing though for the people that are working here.
Oh, yeah, oh, I agree.
Like, there are, there are a lot of different um varieties of affordable housing.
Sure.
That we need, and I've said this before, I think Sadie's gonna have to do it. I don't think we're gonna get developers who wanna do it.
Yeah, because they're normally about market rate.
Whereas we can say, we don't have, we have to break even, you gotta be able to like pay our management, and we're okay, we don't have to answer to shareholders.
Right, well, and there are opportu, as you, you know, do these efforts. That does open you up to that pot of money from state funding sources.
To get some money before it just disappears into a black hole from.
Well, and, and Lisa, it's a shame, but even if, if you get the money. You run into this problem where nobody wants it in their backyard, like it's the projects kind of thing. But if you look at the Habitat, they look great. Who would know that, you know, it wasn't a for-profit market rate kind of a.
No, they do not, they do a decent job with it.
There's nobody that knows.
Yeah.
And it, they're, they're, I wish we could get more in town, honestly. Yeah.
One thing that, it's off-topic of comprehensive plan slightly, but one thing that. Planning commissioners talk quite a lot about of trying to encourage is more accessible dwelling units, ADUs.
Mm-hmm.
And one thing that's been quite an interesting strategy elsewhere is kind of having a partner like Habitat or. Someone else, um, Denver has a good one, that kind of creates a set of a pre-approved plans that meet building code. They can build them for this relatively low price. Any person in town who wants one can just take the plan for free.
Mm-hmm.
Or sign a contract with Habitat and basically place it right on the lot, and that could be a potential way of pushing for.
We'd have to do some uh changes to some of our parking requirements for ADUs.
Right, well, I think there's a lot of, and, and this potentially as a potential talking point would be, there are a lot of potential changes. That the housing need or the housing policy analysis that they did as part of that IHOP grant. Uh, recommend that are kind of low-hanging fruit, and so. There may be opportunities where you say, well, you can have an ADU and we'll waive your parking requirement, but it has to be de-restricted at a certain. Income level or it has to be rented or something like that, so I think there's more opportunities for us to do stuff like that going forward. That doesn't really cost us much, but could get more naturally apparent in affordable housing.
Hmm. Dylan, do you have anything else for us?
I.
There are places.
Andy, I, I, I had a suggestion, it'd be a pretty good use of our time.
Uh, go, go ahead. I was just gonna, uh, uh, do you wanna touch on the grant potential? Like, yeah, it's in April, how that might help us with our. How plan?
Sure, so last thing we'll mention on that is that state currently has a funding source, that's probably a one-time-only source. For, it's mostly directed towards housing needs assessments, and that's probably a regional effort. When the housing authority wants it really up and running or when the county and all the municipalities, but. They do have funding available for their new required comp plan element, which is sustainable growth, and so that's something we may. Um, apply for. Essentially, sustainable growth requires us to say, what are our policies to promote growth? If it's small or sprawl, what, what are vacant and underutilized sites that could be redeveloped? What are underdeveloped sites that are kind of outside of town that might be appropriate for residential use? So there might be an opportunity for, uh, you know, maybe a very focused grant to get a consultant in to do that sort of. A collection, say, here's underutilized sites, here's, you know. How you could best leverage them without sprawling, though I think we are less likely to sprawl given the geography of the state. Of the town, uh, but we may apply for that, it's due in a couple of weeks, but since it would be such a small and focused to ask.
Hmm.
It would probably only, you know, a consultant to just that one very specific section might only be twenty thousand dollars or something like that, yeah.
And there's gonna be other challenges, Chuck, I mean, if that's true, and I, going back to your, what you said earlier about the state coming down on us and saying. You guys have to have a certain amount of um growth in a certain amount of time. I mean, right now. I don't think anybody's gonna be building anything for a little while until we figure out, so it's like, those things are gonna be, have to be put on the back burner. Because you can't put the burden of that on a little tiny town like ours.
You know, we about have to tear something down to Dylan.
Yeah, and like, and I don't know where the money comes for that either, so.
Yeah, I find it difficult as a small community, there's a lot of policies that really are targeted at the large communities.
And, and to be fair, Dylan, I just wanna inject that a lot of times, we do talk about this at Dr. Cog and CML. As it relates to, there's qualifiers in there sometimes, like, uh, cities with populations over twenty thousand.
Hmm.
And, and things like that, so.
Well, we, I mean, we are, we are inherently limited with all catch, because there's only certain places you can build here.
Well, so is Colorado, I don't understand this, like, this push for development when we also have a water crisis, that, like, how are they on the front range? Expected to come, I mean, I, there's a term that I can use, but I don't think they're pulling water out of the sky. Just willy-nilly to build these homes. I think that's also like unrealistic as well.
Well, absolutely.
One point about the grant is, we took this information to the, the regional housing authority um with the last meeting. We didn't want to, we didn't want to put the county or the regional authority in a position that we'd be competing for this grant with them. So we said, we, we'd support ourselves to you if you wanted to apply for this grant, we'd fully support it. Um, to address the regional issues since they haven't done a report, regional assessments since, like, in twenty eighteen.
Hmm.
Um, they felt they weren't in a position to be able to be active on that for the bandwidth currently to get the application in. And so they've kind of blessed us applying for it, so we would not compete against them.
Gotcha.
And then this is due on April eleventh, and then as my understanding, you guys generally bless this in some manner that we can go forth with it.
Right.
So. So we wouldn't have another meeting before November.
Right.
So council's okay with just providing direction. I think again, as Dylan said, it'd be a relatively small grant focused.
Lisa, would you be all right?
Yes, if we can get somebody to pay for the stuff that we have to do.
Okay. You never have to ask me about it.
Okay.
I'll just go for every single one.
Janine? All right, and Jeremy? And the Janans?
Thank you.
I had a thought just cuz we actually amazingly have a little bit of extra time. Danny Tomlinson is here and he was on our regular schedule at seven, uh, to, uh, talk about, uh, something that is of concern. It also helps that Paul is here. And Danny, was Amy gonna be with you or was it just gonna be you talking?
She has a conflict, she's line dancing.
And, and nice confession.
What are you doing here?
Between line dancing or pickleballing, but it's line dancing tonight.
Well, I had a thought, uh, just since we're all here and like I said, Paul is here al- also that, that would be of help. Uh, chief's there too in case something, uh, uh, need to be talked about, uh, with enforcement measures. But I thought, why, why don't we have Danny come forward since he, uh, was already on, uh, for, uh, public comment? And we'll save him, him some time and we'll, uh, we'll discuss this issue with, uh, uh, what the mountain bike park has really, I think inadvertently, uh, done or it's created a safety problem. I don't really think most of us knew, but Danny and Amy, uh, have an interesting vantage point. Because they are kind of right where you turn to go up Virginia Canyon. Uh, Danny, please, uh, come and, come and have a seat.
Good evening, everyone, and, and I appreciate the, I mean, the introduction. I'm Danny Tomlinson, I think I know everybody around the table. My family, uh, moved to the corner of Virginia Canyon and Virginia, kind of on the northeast corner there. They owned Catholic church in nineteen fifty-seven, so that's the house I grew up in. Amy and I, uh, moved back there about ten years, twelve years ago, something like that. We moved to Denver and, uh, we're fortunate enough to move back. So over the years, over nearly seventy years, we've, uh, been able to watch the traffic up and down Virginia Canyon Road as well as along Virginia Street. And one of the things, uh, in, in the last couple of months is the utility work has been going on. It has not been a problem during the summer though. There's a lot of people that, um, kind of ignore the traffic signals there. If you recall, if you're going west on Virginia, there's a stop sign right at the corner of our house in Virginia Canyon. Where you would stop going west. The traffic going up and down Virginia Canyon has no stop one way going up or coming down. And then Virginia Street, as you go west from Virginia Canyon Road, which is essentially Seventeenth, uh, is one way down to, back to Elks Park.
Yeah.
And, um, so over the years, we have watched people kind of blow that stop sign out in front of our house. They're headed west onto Virginia and, um, you know, they wanna cut that couple of seconds off. They, they don't even slow down. And, um, we, they, we also, we've got a split rail fence out there. And I've put a couple of rocks ten or twelve, fifteen years ago about the size of a, you know, huge to keep them from cutting the corner as they come west on Virginia Street and head up the canyon. They were clipping my fence and I replaced that fence post on the corner and some of the rails half dozen times and finally decided, you know, if I put a big enough rock out there, that would stop them from cutting that corner. Uh, which is, Paul, I know goes up there and repairs the stop sign, what, two, three times a year at a minimum?
I don't remember how many stop signs get run over and, and we get a lot of run over stop signs, I'm sorry, Danny. But I know we're, we're up there a couple of times, uh, every once in a while.
So it's in any event, and I, um, it's, I, I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna be negative about the mountain bikers because I think that, uh, the mountain bike park is a, is a good thing for.
I will share with them about this drop off thing, I wouldn't know where this is going on.
Uh, what, what's happening is that, uh, they're taking a, a van or a pickup or whatever they've got to carry a bunch of bikes, meaning four, five, six bikes, up to the top of the trail up by the Franklin Mine, dropping off the riders and then whoever it is that drew the short straws and coming back down and meeting them at the Argo.
But there's actually companies doing it too.
Oh, okay.
This, this is classic.
Yeah. And, um, so what's happening is that we're seeing people that are in a hurry, don't really wanna stop at that stop sign on Virginia Street, kind of blowing through it at the same time as there's a truckload of bicycles and bicyclists coming up or down the canyon. And your brakes clear and whatever. I, there's been a, and the chief could probably tell us how many accidents there are actually are. There haven't been a lot because of the construction lately and, and also the closure of the mountain bike park. But it, it does create a, a, a safety hazard. So we've, Amy and I are suggesting that perhaps a three-way stop, meaning both directions on Virginia Canyon as well as the existing, uh, stop sign at, at Virginia Street would not be too much of a, um, an inconvenience for people going up or down. The mayor and I talked about it the other day, maybe we could put little rumble strips. I'm, I'm not suggesting speed bump or anything, it's gonna cause a lot of problems, but rumble strips back down the canyon and up the canyon a little bit so that people know that there is a stop sign coming up because many people have been driving up and down that road for years and years.
Paul, your thoughts on a, a three-way stop there?
Downhill could pose a problem with, uh, traction in the winter time. You know, we do sand it well, we do play out plow it, but you know, there could be those, uh, those hours or overnight, uh, periods in between where it's just really slick and having somebody try and stop for that stop sign.
We're not gonna have as many people coming down the canyon. He started, I think Danny's really talking about the summertime is the.
The northbound could, or yeah, the northbound could, so you stop a, a heavy truck trying to go up that hill that, uh, that may encounter some traction problems trying to get through that intersection again. So, you know, momentum takes you up the hill. That's why the, the uphill persons, you're supposed to, uh, yeah, yield, yield to the, the uphill traffic for that reason. So, you know, heavy vehicle trying to gain traction going uphill could be an issue. I don't have a problem with putting a three-way stop sign in there. Now's a good time because we have the construction in there and we can, we can, uh, put that as a plan.
Yeah, I would think we wouldn't even be discussing it had the mountain bike park not, you know, created. I mean, in seventy years, you've never thought about this before.
Yeah, I, I, you, we occasionally see a fender benders out there. But it, yeah, it's not a serious problem, but the, the traffic has increased significantly with the mountain bike park.
Chief, uh, you see any problems, uh, for one with this three-way?
I, I would say no, but I actually would like, of course, a little bit of time to kind of spend some time up there and, and see that. As far as accidents, I'm not aware that we've had any accidents there at that intersection. Doesn't mean that, that the, with all the traffic now, the mountain bike park, that's.
The mountain bike park opening next week.
Uh, April first.
Yeah, so.
And, and it's gonna be sporadic cuz, uh, like about April seventh-ish, uh, they're gonna be doing these helicopter flights. And they can't have anybody in the park when they start doing that.
Just now charging a water line, the new water line they got put in place. So over the next few weeks, we'll be doing the, uh, water services and attaching those, those homes on Virginia Canyon to that new water. Water line, okay. So there's gonna be periods where, uh, Virginia Canyon is just completely shut down for, for, uh, the daytime hours.
And, and please understand that I, Amy and I are not, um, making the suggestion respectfully uh, uh, out of inconvenience to us. We're, we're kind of doing it from a, um.
Danny, I agree with you. I, I think it's.
That I, we think that the situation can be improved without a lot of inconvenience.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, when I come up to drive, turn into my driveway, I come to practically a full stop just because I've seen so many cars going west on Virginia while turned in. Same thing when I'm coming out of the drive. I, it, it, it's not, we, we don't have a dog in the fight, I'm just, we're, we're kind of offering it out as.
I don't disagree with you, I went on a corner and I had to put rocks and things also because people kept running around with stuff. But, um, I know when I have, that's always my corner for the borough races, don't stop, there's burrows in the road. And they're racing down, up and down Virginia.
Yeah. And it, it doesn't help matters that, uh, usually when you're heading west on Virginia Street and you come to the, the stop sign that's there at Danny's, uh, it work, probably ninety-five percent of the time, it's a blind, uh, turn, you know.
I live at a four-way stop and people still don't stop, so.
Can't think stupid even with duct tape.
All right.
So anyway, that, that's it. Uh, we're, as I said, we're not making a request for all personal benefit or safety. It's just kind of, we're, we're suggesting that respectfully to the council that it might be something that, uh, would be worth considering just in the interest of.
Well, well, Danny, I, I appreciate it. I, I know, uh, council does as well. Uh, probably a, a next good step would be to, uh, take the chief up on, uh, let him have some time with the mountain bike park openings to take, take a look at this. And, uh, um, you know, like for, I'll give you a quick example. As far as I know, I don't think Combat has ever put the word out not to be doing the, the drop off thing, you know? Andy, uh, do you know of, of any communication like that?
I don't think it's encouraged.
Yeah.
Well.
Maybe it needs to be more.
Maybe it needs to be more, yeah, right.
I, I think it's kind of part of the equation, guys. I mean, that was, if you go into any of these other places where they have their bike parks, that's how that guy makes money. He loads up the bu- the bus with bikes, they pay him to take him to the top. They do the same thing at ski runs, you know, backcountry ski runs. So that's how that guy's making money and the faster he goes, the more people he gets. So, I mean.
Yeah.
I hate to be the told you so in the crowd, but that was just gonna be expected as far as I knew.
I think it will, it's, it's, would be impossible to regulate out, at least for.
Well, they show a business license, what, number one. If they're making money.
In the city.
In the city, technically that's a business, so.
Right.
I mean, if you've got nine people that just pull up in different cars, I'm gonna ask you, where's your business license? You know, at least, I don't know how easy that is to do, but I mean, it sounds like a business. I mean, you guys probably see a ton of those guys hanging out in front of, uh, your restaurant.
I, I do think with, it'll probably reduce slightly when the, you know, the bikes can just get lowered onto a gondola and pulled to the top, but I'm sure it won't ever be eliminated completely.
Yeah, yeah. Well, there's certainly some things we can do to discourage that in the short term and, um, let's see if, uh, if, uh, you know, some, give the chief some time too to take a look at it.
Sure.
Uh, staff, anything, uh, for?
Let me get a clarification, I'm hearing three-way stop, uh, that, uh, which way with the third light?
Yeah, I'm just thinking.
Virginia Street.
Virginia's a one-way going.
It's a one-way already.
Okay.
So there, hopefully would not be anybody coming up the wrong way.
Well, it's a weird.
They definitely need to stop.
It's a weird corner. I mean, you could, we could possibly do it with just the downhill. And if, I mean, Paul's probably right to a certain extent, there is a sliding issue. But I don't think winter is ever gonna be a time where it's really gonna be as big of a deal.
Yeah.
Paul and his crew do a fantastic job of keeping Virginia Canyon and Virginia Street, that matter.
Yeah. I mean, I drive a Corolla around Charlie's house and that's the slickest part of that whole road right there. Yeah, the shadow.
All right, uh, anything further?
No, and I'd just like to thank, uh, Danny for, um, accommodating us with the construction. There was a period where we needed to get traffic through and I think part of his, he offered up part of the corner. That corner he was just talking about with all the disruption, the, where traffic can go through there. We really appreciate that, we needed an easement on that as well, so, thank you.
And Paul has been great to work with and, uh, the construction company have been absolutely wonderful. They have accommodated us every step of the way.
That's good to hear.
It's been a very difficult project, as you know, just how narrow it is up there and the walls and the block.
Thank you, everyone, let's reconvene here in about five minutes for our regular meeting. Let's reconvene here in about five minutes for our regular meeting.
Is it easy to make sure that it stays non-public access, this is on emergency access, rather?
Oh, yeah, Mr. Young, last thing he wants is any traffic.
Oh, well, that's what I figured.
Yeah. Um, any further discussion? Uh, all right, then, uh, roll call, please.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. And next up, we are going to have another public hearing on resolution number thirteen. Uh, this is a resolution number thirteen, series twenty twenty-five, a resolution adopting a revised general fund appropriation and budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four for the city of Idaho Springs to reflect unanticipated expenses and year-end adjustments uh, within the general fund during such year. Uh, the council is required by law to hold a public hearing on this item. The order of hearing will be as follows. I will invite staff to give a presentation of the revised appropriation and budget. I will invite, uh, public comment. Uh, any questions from councils if staff, uh, may be asked and discussed. I will close the hearing and I will ask council for a motion on the resolution. Uh, any questions before we begin? All right, I will now open the hearing at, uh, seven twelve. It's, uh, uh, opening the public hearing on resolution number thirteen. And, uh, city staff, uh, like to start off with you.
Sure, mayor, uh, this is regarding the two thousand and twenty-four budget, which had expenses in our, um, building permit line item, which were well above what was budgeted for two thousand and twenty-four, so because they were, uh, at a level well above what was budgeted, we have to do this, uh, adjustment to the budget and it has to be through this process. So, uh, these, uh, but these building permits are reimbursed, uh, by the, um, applicants. So it is a, it is a pass-through, if you will, but it's still an expense, shows up as an expense at a higher level.
You bet. Uh, any, uh, public comment? Any, uh, questions from council?
Just why did it go up so much? I mean, that's kind of a, a lot.
Well, uh, you know, I'll give you an example, maybe like more than double, right?
Yeah.
And you, and you can have a year where there's a big project like, uh, this going on, uh, the old, uh, football field. Or this year that we'll be seeing with, uh, Virginia Canyon and the Gondola, the Public Works Building. That's a good one, Public Works Building, you bet.
Are we still talking about doing this in-house and in, uh, in cooperation with the county and the other?
Well, that's, that's another matter, but we're, we're certainly, uh, talking about it. Um, any, uh, any further questions from council? Uh, hearing none. Um, I will close the hearing at seven fourteen. And, uh, council, uh, I'm ready for a motion, if anybody would like to make it.
I'll move to approve resolution thirteen, series twenty twenty-five, a resolution adopting revised general fund appropriation and budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four for the city of Idaho Springs to reflect unanticipated expenses and year-end adjustments within the general fund during such year.
Thank you, Lisa, uh, do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Janine. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. All right, we will move to, uh, ordinance first reading, uh, with ordinance number ten, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve ordinance number ten, series twenty twenty-five, and ordinance granting a conditional use, use to permit, to permit temporary seasonal employee camping during raptor season only in two thousand and twenty-five and two thousand and twenty-six, and property west of the Shelley Queen Ballfields, part also known as ninety-five East Idaho Springs Road.
All right, thank you, Jeremy, do I have a second?
Mm-hmm.
I'll second.
Uh, a second from Janine. And any discussion?
And did we have any challenges, any, anything?
Zero.
Zero? Cause I didn't hear anything.
Yeah, kind of got the, they were over there.
The, uh, and we will have a full, for second reading, we'll have a full report and that will be here and all of that for the public hearing.
One of the other thing is you don't have the number on your ordinance. On the actual ordinance that will be signed, there's no number.
Oh, it might have been uploaded before it was the number, like it was on the agenda.
Yeah. And, and chief, uh, did you wanna, uh, make a comment?
The, the, we did not have problems. Um, they did a good job of, of, um, you know, dealing and keeping their property clean and, um, we just didn't have, the only issue which has been addressed really is the, just some, sometimes people were driving on the via bike path.
Oh, yeah.
Pathway. That's, that looks like that's been part of this, this new agreement to, for the, uh, to build a gate or put something as pro sident, will limit that. So that was the only thing.
All right. Thank you, any, uh, further questions from council? Uh, uh, hearing done, roll call, please.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. All right, we will move to, uh, ordinance, uh, second readings, uh, starting with ordinance number six, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance number six, series twenty twenty-five, and ordinance approving this is three hundred, approving a multi-year occupancy agreement for that city-owned property known as eight thirty-nine Colorado Highway one oh three.
All right, thank you, Janine, do I have a second?
A second.
A second from Kate. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. All right, next up, uh, third, uh, public hearing for the night. Um, and, uh, this will be for, uh, ordinance number five, series twenty twenty-five. Uh, and or, uh, ordinance zoning the one point nine nine acre parcel of, uh, city-owned land within the J.J. Elliott placer, located in section two, township four south, range seventy-three west of the sixth principal meridian in Clark Creek County, Colorado, known as eight thirty-nine Colorado Highway one oh three, as residential three, and these are three. Uh, state and city law requires a, uh, formal public hearing on this proposed zoning. We will require a public, uh, testimony to be given under oath. Uh, we do not follow any formal rules of evidence. Uh, if there's a question about the admissibility of evidence or testimony, uh, I will make a, a ruling on that. Uh, the order of the meeting, uh, will be as follows. I'll invite city staff to give a presentation. Uh, I will invite public comment. Uh, any questions from council may be asked and discussed. I will close the hearing, I will ask council for a motion on the ordinance. Uh, is there any questions before we begin? All right, I will now open the public hearing on ordinance number five, series twenty twenty-five. Uh, and it is, uh, seven nineteen. And we'll start off with, uh, city staff.
I'll come up, I'll just present.
Thank you, Dylan.
The director, Joe Graves.
All right.
The owner planner. I just prepared a couple of brief, these rules to, for, you know, any, you know, mine and the like, which I will quickly pull up. Second. And just to note, as I'm doing that, this was continued from last meeting in order to achieve all the necessary public notices.
Okay.
So that was me. And for the purposes of my report, I just wanna have this up on screen. It starts just with the criteria for zoning approval. Now that this property is annexed, we have nine days to zone it, this is our report. I wanted to note two items at the start, the first is that if, so, once it's zoned, that does not give any right to develop anything on the property. There is a second step to this process, which also requires all sharing with planning commission and council, the final development plan, that's where we'll review actual building plans and site plans and density and all of that. Um, the other thing to note is, of course, just, um, for anyone who's not aware in the room, this was purchased, um, with the second payment happening back in January. Part of this site is an agreement that, uh, this only be used for affordable senior housing. So for housing for senior citizens. Um, so there's the seven criteria for approval, and I just wanted to start with the idea of what's being proposed. And so when we say R three zone, this is just a vicinity map of the zoning, hard to see, but obviously on the recording, it would be great. Um, residential will be about single-family residential, duplex residential, multifamily residential. Um, within city limits, the subject property is there adjacent to our cemetery that's owned park and recreation. Approximately point two is about one point one six with some remainder mile away from this existing city limits, which is already zoned R three. And so we're proposing that this new city property would be R three. And note on the adjacent, um, county zoning, it is si- single-family zoning, so functionally, this would be a slight increase in, or it's an increase in intensity of the zoning on site as it's going into the city with the goal of providing that multifamily senior house. Um, and if, if zoned, I just wanted to say, these are our general development standards that would be required. R three zoning is required a high limit of thirty-five feet, open space requirement of fifty percent, front and rear setbacks at twenty feet, side setbacks at five feet, and just some general parking requirements for whole community development, um, which is not necessarily relevant to the zoning, but gets a sense of if multifamily is developed, we're looking at parking commensurate with that. Um, going to, into the criteria for approval, the first one talks about the comprehensive plan. And what's important to know with the comprehensive plan is that, of course, this area is not in for, would not have been part of the comprehensive plan in the past, this particular parcel. But when you look in this area, it identifies a few different things, transitional mixed use, regional, commercial, multi, um, kind of a mix of residential uses, transitional mixed use doesn't necessarily, it speaks to things like uh, maintaining and being respectful residential character, single-family residential, attached, single-family townhome houses, multifamily with converted, single-family residences, retail uses, civic uses, office uses, et cetera. Regional commercial is a lot broader to allow things, including multifamily residential. Um, and it's also important to note that there are a number of other comprehensive plan goals to consider. Uh, for example, we, back in two thousand and seventeen, when this was done, this exit two forty area was identified as a potential multifamily housing site. Um, it also identifies an important goal that this would, but to, long-term would achieve. We're obviously not approving multifamily senior housing on the site today, but the zoning would allow for it. And that's pursuing programs to allow seniors the opportunity to age in place. It's about jurisdictional efforts to locate and develop adequate facilities for seniors. It talks about, uh, creating active adult housing, assisted living, elderly care facilities and programs and the like. We also have some other plans that talk to it about, like our housing needs assessment, which was done with the county in two thousand and eighteen, identifies a need for senior housing. It also noted that back in two thousand and eighteen, that was done, we only had twenty-seven specific units for senior housing and identified a need for twenty-five to fifty more. If multifamily is built here, that would go a long way to achieving that because nothing really today has been done since two thousand and eighteen. Um, so given even more so than the land use designation in the general area, some of these specific goals and objectives that are contemplated show that it appears to meet those standards. Um, just popping back for now to our zoning approval criteria, the second one is material changes in the character of the neighborhood. Um, I would say, obviously, there've been some changes to this corridor, but bigger than that, we've had an overall change in our whole community. We're continuing to age as a population and then although this zoning approval doesn't necessarily take into the context, senior housing, that context is important. Um, the community is changing and aging and this is, you know, we would, I don't think we would purchase this property without that thought in mind, which, which justifies zoning in that case. Um, there is also the opportunity, as I showed in the zoning, to allow for changes over time on the west side of the product. Where the school is now is also on commercial, the right-hand side where there's some residential, AVA rafting and the like, that's also on multifamily already. Thinking about preserving and promoting property values, um, staff believes that there's no reason why this would necessarily reduce any property values. Um, and an important thing to note is that we will have to do detailed traffic studies, we'll have to go through the FDP process before anything's built. Where, where, you know, impacts on adjacent properties will certainly be considered. Talking about harmony and compatibility with surrounding land uses, section D. Uh, I'll, I'll make the obvious caveat that during construction, of course, there would be impacts, as with any development, but long-term, if the city is to consider design elements, citing of it, architectural elements to try to, its best to fit in with the existing architecture of the corridor, there's no reason why uh, thoughtful multifamily for seniors wouldn't necessarily be appropriate on this site. Uh, considering, uh, the consideration of those architectural features, bulk enassing, site design, location of parking lots, that's something that we get into that at FDP, and I believe that if we consider those elements, they can fit in nicely on this corridor, you know, about a half mile from the exit two forty interchange. Talking about traffic congestion, um, I, I took some C dot figures. Highway one oh three is considered a major collector road and per their online transportation information system or Otis, the average annual daily traffic is about twenty-seven hundred vehicles today, which is pretty high. It's about six thousand north of exit two forty coming into town, so that's a lot higher. But twenty-seven hundred with the CD byway there is a
The scenic byway.
A lot of vehicles. Just looking at our specifications for design and construction, they estimate five vehicle trips per unit per day for multifamily. Uh, studies typically show that senior housing would have fewer parking needs, for example, the one there at eighteen forty, the project supports twelve parking spaces for sixteen units.
Hmm.
And it doesn't tend to cause problems. But if you take into account that five average daily trips per day, you're looking at thirty units would be maybe a, you know, a hundred and fifty average daily trips, a five per, five percent increase, forty units, seven point four percent, fifty units, nine point three, but it's, again, you know, you have to take into account an actual traffic study.
I don't think that's actually significant considering where the other density of traffic issues we have in the, going on in the city that seems like, huh?
Re- and of course, you know, if C dot, if we develop something, it's a state highway, C dot said you need an extra turn lane or something in that respect, that would be something that would be needed. Similar things like drainage improvements and the like are obviously required, um, as part of the development. You know, any development really should happen. Um, so I, I would say that's a relatively low, I mean, Kate, there. And the final, or I guess there's two more, whether it will promote public welfare. I think this is a key element that I believe is met. Allowing seniors to age in place and have opportunities in the community where they may have spent their entire lives clearly is a public benefit, this is a clear community need. And, um, you know, if it was just multifamily housing on its face, you would look at this differently, but the zoning is specifically to accommodate what this was purchased for and is required to be put there. And so is promoting the public welfare in that way. And finally, whether denial of the proposed zoning would impose undue hardship on the owner, which is the city. Um, there are other things we could zone it to that would allow multifamily, uh, such as a planned development, that would be more of a flexible zoning solution. Um, rural, um, multifamily, which is a lot more on the East Idaho Springs Road area. But given that we already have R three zoning in this vicinity, it, it, it seems like the reasonable option at this time.
And Dylan, I just wanna confirm, regardless, uh, this is set aside in perpetuity for affordable senior housing. It, it must meet that definition. And, uh, I, I did have some questions that may also, uh, help counsel. R three is a thirty-five foot, uh, height limit, is that correct?
Yes, it's a, which is the same height limit as our single-family and duplex zoning and is the same height limit as the county currently will allow.
And, and because I did get some questions about this, that is an average, uh, height, so I'm giving an example. You may be thirty feet on one side and you may be forty feet on another with an average height of thirty-five, is that allowable?
Hmm, more or less, yeah. They calculate, or the city's codes would say if you have a, let's say, a peaked roof, that's just typical triangle, you take the average between the low and the high.
Yeah.
So you're basically saying the midpoint of that roof angle is the height.
I, I just wanted to confirm that, cause I know there had been, uh, some concerns. Um, and, um, Dylan, uh, anything further, uh, to testify to?
Uh, well, the only other thing I'll say is that, uh, from a planning perspective, my recommendation would be to approve the zoning as, as R three, as per the ordinance.
All right, thank you, I would ask that you stand by, just in case some members of the public, uh, who we have encouraged uh, to come forward and, and speak to this tonight, uh, have additional questions. Uh, so, uh, next up, uh, members of the public, uh, Craig, you had actually, uh, uh, signed up, so, uh, uh, please come forward. And I wanna thank everybody, uh, for taking the initiative to be here tonight. I'm sure you had other things to do with your evening. Uh, public comment is, is never fun, uh, but it's important that we hear from you, regardless of what side, uh, of the issue you're on. And, uh, it, it generally is limited to, uh, three minutes. Uh, I, I don't think we're gonna have that many folks tonight, but, uh, Craig, please, uh, kick us off with this word of.
I'm sorry, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, well, before I do that, I wanted to thank the mayor and the council for giving me a chance to speak. My name is Craig Hernison and I own seven forty and seven sixty on Highway one oh three, which would be, uh, northwest of Al's property directly across from the cemetery entrance. And, uh, I'm opposed to this. I am opposed to the zoning. Uh, it is gonna drastically change our area up there, which, you know, we've been blessed to live up there, those of us that live up there. And it's a little paradise, where these little places of paradise are becoming less and less and less. Um, and I just wanna bring up a few things, why I oppose it. Uh, one is it's a wildlife corridor and we're drastically gonna interrupt that. The other thing that really concerns me too is the impact on Chicago Creek itself, which a lot of people don't realize this, but is actually a naturally reproducing brown trout stream. Where trout actually come up out of Clear Creek and come up Chicago Creek and spawn every fall. So impacts on that, it's a fragile ecosystem. Now, I know that, um, if you guys proceed with this development, the little bit I know about it, we're talking a little less than two acres, understand that at least an acre of it has to stay open space, which I would think, and then a parking lot that's probably gonna be at least a quarter of an acre, now I'm just guessing. But there probably is gonna need to be a retention pond built. In other words, you wouldn't be able to discharge runoff from that parking lot directly into Chicago Creek. It would have to have some kind of retention pond to slow that runoff down so that Chicago Creek, which flows very drastically during the year, could dilute that. Or you're gonna impact the health of that creek. And then you could impact downstream users, which you don't wanna get involved with that. Uh, the other thing that I understand is, I think, uh, Chicago Creek Sanitation owns the sewer line, if I'm correct there, not the city. Uh, the city would, and I don't see this being a big deal, the city would have to buy a tap from Chicago Creek Sanitation. There would also have to be, and I, this might have already occurred, a flow study that would have to be done uh, awesome to make sure that the sewer line could handle the extra capacity. Now, I know that you're proposing or it should happen this summer that you're gonna put a new water line in, which I know is needed. Um, just because, huh, one of my best friends in the world has done a lot of work for the city, you probably know him, Wayne Ramy, Ramy Environmental. So I know that it's a drastic need. But I do think that there are definite challenges to building on that site. Just a few that I stated. Um, the other thing is that I think a lot of people don't recognize is I consider it like a gateway to the Mount Evans Wilderness Area. A place where people can go through and don't see something so drastic as this will be. It will be a drastic change for this area. Uh, I'm not saying that the housing isn't needed. Um, I just wish there would have been other consideration given to maybe some other locations for it. I don't think it's the appropriate place. The other thing I'll bring up is that C dot, I'm gonna say from the maps that I've looked at, has about sixteen feet of right way going into Al's property. Approximately the same amount they have going into the cemetery entrance. May- maybe not quite as much, but it's about sixteen to fourteen feet from what I can see. I don't know if that's gonna be a problem or not. Um, I think if you propose them to do like a turnoff lane going into the senior center or some kind of pull-off somewhere, I think that's gonna be a big issue. So then you're really changing the footprint of the, uh, of the area, but I would just like you to consider that it is a scenic byway and I do consider it like a gateway to one of the most pristine wilderness areas that the state has to offer. And we just happen to be blessed enough to live in a place that offers that. You know? Well, Craig, uh, thank you, uh, again, uh, we all appreciate, uh, folks stepping forward to comment on this matter, uh, regardless of what side of they're on. But, uh, uh, thank you. Well, I appreciate you. And I, I have to ask Dylan, do we have anybody that would like to make a public comment online?
Um, I don't see anyone online, but you may have more here.
Sure.
See, I don't have any attendees other than, uh, Carmen.
Is it, uh, Rhonda?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I couldn't see you with the, with chief in the way, please come on up.
Uh, Mayor Council, I'd like to speak to the handout, um, she got the handout to me past deadline for packet. So this is just a handout, speaking of the comments, she's gonna comment on now. Thank you, ma'am. Uh-huh. Thank you. Hello?
Thank you.
All right, but if we could give this to everyone else?
Right. Please. Thank you.
Your line. Don't do that, original. Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Rhonda Reagan, and I, uh, home of property of eight seven eight Colorado one oh three Idaho Springs, which is directly across from what we're talking about.
Thank you.
Uh, I wanna go on the record that we're in opposition of this. Um, when it talks about transitional mixed use, uh, that is one-level buildings, not forty-foot or thirty-five-foot high-density units. Um, also changes in the neighborhood, so the resoning would quote tend to preserve and promote property values. In my opinion, this would dissipate the pristine mountains, free cemetery ground and existing residences by flooding the area with construction disturbance of wildlife, habitat, uh, ongoing noise, pollution, heavy equipment increase and an influx of a great number of people and construction vehicles now and for years and generations to come. Um, it will affect the traffic, is congestion in the areas are, is already extremely heavy traffic as route to Mount Evans. So, you know, in my opinion, in no ways is this considered by us that it would promote public welfare or positive development in our beloved and beautiful community. And like, our, Craig had a lot more details than me on his specifics, but, um, yes, it's a scenic byway, it's a pristine piece of land that is rare in the world today. And this is the beginning of destroying that. Thank you.
I'm Rhonda, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Rhonda.
Rick, would you like to come up?
Will you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Rick Wells, and my address is seven nine six Chicago Creek Road.
Thank you.
I do live in fact directly opposite the land that we're talking about developing, like almost quit work, like, okay? And first of all, I'd like to thank the mayor, city council, and city staff for having us here tonight. First of all, I want to clarify a few things just to get the groundwork. I believe that Al Brown had every right to sell his property to the city. That was his right. I believe the city has every right and responsibility to go ahead and annex the property and purchase the property, so I'm not arguing any of those points. The city can rezon the property as long as they follow the process. Sometimes, and when I just bring up the point that, I was not aware that most of this was going on until a week ago. Part of it I knew was in the works, but I didn't know how close we were with all this stuff, because the only notification I got by mail was last week. And the only time I saw anything posted was last week, as far as, nothing was posted on the property across the way. And I didn't get anything by mail notifying that any of these prior, previous discussions had taken place. And so I don't know if something just fell through the cracks, or whatever, but I'd like to make note of the fact that in the future, I'd like to state it forward, because, you know, I believe that you guys are good enough and smart enough that you probably followed the letter of the law, but I'd like to make sure that the intent and the, excuse me, and that the spirit of the law gets solid too, that we, that have a stake in this, stakeholders do get notified about things like this. Now, going forward, I would appreciate being on a mailing list or an email list that, that I'm aware of what's going on. As far as the criteria for approval, I would go to be first, the material change in the character of the neighborhood. From Carlson to the turn of the corner, which is what we're talking about right there where the cemetery entrance is, that is business that's been a mixed use all this time. But from that corner, that's kind of the gateway to Mount Boosky. That is the gateway that we started, and from there, it's kind of, that's where the scope of this project is going to be entering a new area. You know, there's not a lot of mixed use housing down there, there's not a lot of big fifty unit developments down there. This is going to be a big change. It's going to be a big change for everybody. And especially for me, for my house, it's going to be everything that I look at every day. That's a, that's a big change. In my belief, that's going to be a material change in that neighborhood. I hope that we can, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to keep going. As far as preserving and promoting the property values, that's really hard to say. I'm not sure what is going to happen on the other side, going further down the highway, going even closer to town. But the question I would ask the people in this room is, would you be more willing to pay for a house that has one or two houses across the street, or has an apartment complex that appears to be an apartment complex that has fifty apartments across the street? Because it does materially change the view, and it changes the, the absolute construction of, of the place. The development of the building is going to have a material impact on my residence. I doubt that it's going to be a positive. Nobody's going to want to buy my place because there's a senior development across the street. That's a fact. Going further, harmony and compatibility with the surrounding, as was mentioned earlier, we lived across from open range for years and years. I've had bears, mountain lions, deer, elk, foxes, coyotes, every kind of wild animals you can imagine coming across the cemetery, come across Al's property, if you will, coming through, over my property. I have it on all my wildlife cams and everything like that. I have a pretty hard idea that, that hardscape is going to continue to facilitate that process. I think we're going to change the course of our well, because the creek is on my side. It's not on your side, it's on my side. And that's where the animals have always come, to be, you know, to be fed and to drink. So I think that's going to materially change the scope of that project. So I think this is going to change everything about where I live right now and how I feel about it. My wife has already told me, it changes the way she feels about it. The moment she heard about everything going on, she says, let's move. You know, that's not something you want to hear when it's your house, your wife wants to leave. So, other concerns that I have are about the, the taxes that are, not that, like financial taxes, but the taxes on the water in the sewer system, which have been addressed. Do we have, because right now, it's a concern that we're going to be running downhill, that there's not going to be enough pressure, there's going to be problems with the sewer lines, when you put in fifty new taps. I think that's a reasonable concern. Also worried about possible increases in fire risk. And I'm worried a little bit about the, the post, you know, during the construction, and then post-construction, we put fifty people over there that have maybe memory issues and stuff. You know, when I drive by the senior center, when I drive by the, it's dropping my, I don't mind mine, the other senior residents, Mitchell White. And you see everybody outside smoking their cigarettes. I don't know what's going to happen when they're flipping their cigarettes, but I really hope we don't start, you know, have higher, increased fire risk and stuff because of that prob, that problem. Memory issues are a big deal when we talk about senior, senior community. After all this is being said, let me talk about the congestion on the, on the traffic pattern. I can tell you, having lived on that street in that point of view, that people turn that corner and they accelerate. You know, they kind of hold to the thirty mile per hour, but they hit that corner and then they accelerate. People on motorcycles accelerate really fast. If you put a left-hand turn lane to go into that property, it's going to cause a huge property, a huge traffic blocking. So without the, the addition of a turn lane, that would be a huge major problem. And I have a feeling that people will continue to use my, go off on the shoulder and use my property to get past anything that stops, which is kind of what they do right now. So, I'm worried about the ingress for sure. And I'm worried about the egress, and worried about people and the safety issues. Okay, I think it's congested, it's congested this, this right now, and then the summer time it gets far worse. If you've ever been up there during the weekends, you know that the traffic on, on that highway is just absolutely outrageous, and it's going to get worse. That for one. Now, that being said, I hope going forward that we can be more aware of what's going on. I, I'm speaking against the project, but I pretty much know where the writing is on the wall. I think this is going to pass. So going forward, I'd like to be made more aware of the meeting, the planning, and be more included in it, okay? I'd like to be on a mailing list, if there is such a thing, and be, be able to attend meetings when that's possible. I just, I want to be a part of this process and not be in the dark. And I want to be able to, you know, have my two cents. I'm really worried about a senior population that close to the road. I'm really worried about where they're going to, there's no sidewalks out there, there's no pass. Where are these people going to go? They can't, might just walk out the door and walk into town. There's nothing, there's nowhere to go. It's a problem. So, I hope the development takes the interest in it. And when you, when it's plotted, that they actually take the interest of seniors and, and take the concerns of senior citizens into at heart, and build this thing like a good, well-developed senior community, since that's the way I think it's going to go. And that we, if we're going to create it, we create something nice that won't be nicer when I look across the street. Thank you for your time.
Rick, thank you very much. Any other members of the audience?
Can I just make one more comment?
Yeah, Craig, go ahead.
I know, I know, I have my say, but one thing that Rick brought up that I think is really crucial, and it's the fire danger. We've got beetle kill up through there. I mean, we're talking thousands of acres, and I know there's fire danger up in town. But I think when, when you're up through there, and the way the wind comes down through that valley, you're talking a different level. And everybody knows, I was hoping the U.S. Forest Service would be here. I know they got notified because they're within three hundred feet. But I think everybody knows that it's, it's not a matter of if it's going to happen, it's when it's going to happen. We will have a major forest fire catastrophe in this area, like it or not, because you can't control the thousands of acres of beetle kill. And the other thing is the people that use the area, which is more and more every year, you can't control their stupidity, lighting a fire where they shouldn't be. And it would just take an instant, and it would just be a total disaster.
Well, Craig, thank you. I was just exercising a little barrel discretion, because I don't think any of us want to shortchange any of the, the factors in this. And I, I would ask, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to this before I close the hearing?
Well, I would say, I live up that road.
Oh, oh, please, please come up and state for the record.
Well, this is the first I've heard about it, but.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Name and Howard, and I live at six five three Chicago Creek Road. But I would say that our fire insurance and our property insurance is quadrupled because of the fire hazard, so that is a real threat. So, that's all I have to say.
All right, well, I want to thank everybody.
Thank you.
Again, for, for coming in and giving of your time. Does, before I close the hearing, I just want to make sure, does council have any questions further from our staff? Oh, yes.
So with an R three development designation, it has to be fifty percent open space. Where does parking fit into that? Because I, the design ideas that we saw were two buildings. How does parking, like, does parking have to be part, separate from that fifty percent? Like, all, like the buildings and parking have to be fifty percent, and then the open space has to be fifty percent? How is that calculated with the parking?
Yeah, that's what, what you described is correct. The way that it's written in our development standards is the fifty percent is the minimum proportion of lot in unobstructed open space. So I would say unobstructed open space would be, parking would not be part of that.
So parking and buildings would have to be in the other fifty percent?
Right.
Okay.
All right, anything further? Hearing none, I will close the hearing at seven fifty-three. And council, any discussion before a motion is made? I would like to make the motion.
Well, I actually.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jenny?
No, I'm just, just to state the obvious, we're required, we annexed, we're required to zone it in ninety days, right? This is just, no matter what happens, we have to zone it, and we have to pick a zoning code, so I just want to say, name that.
Well, also, when we bought this, it was bought with the deed restriction that this would be senior housing, like, he would not have sold.
Affordable.
Affordable senior housing, he would not have sold this. Like, the sale would have never happened without the senior housing piece of it. Where are you going with this?
The reason I said that is because I'm sure there's people in the audience who would love that. So, yeah, I get where, I know what you're saying. We, we accrued it because we need housing. It follows our comp plan, follows the county comp plan, and it follows what the state wants us to do. We're housing for both, you know, families and our seniors, and we have limited space. I would hope that the planning commission, with the help of the neighbors, would look into this project and make sure that the environmental impact would be minimal, that the water would be, I mean, I think Idaho Springs itself can just stand on a very high podium of saying, we create great water, we wouldn't want to do anything to not do that in the future. Having been on planning, I'm, I'm positive that they're going to ask your opinion about the building. You will be there, being a part of the development of that building, and you get to argue with developers as much as you want. So I, I encourage you guys to go, you know, start watching for the, the planning commission meetings.
Well, thank you, Kate. Anything further before the motion is made? I would like to make the motion to approve ordinance number five, series twenty twenty-five, an ordinance zoning the one point nine nine acre parcel of city-owned land within the J.J. Elliott placer, located in section two, township four south, range seventy-three west of the six principal meridian in Clerk Creek County, Colorado, known as eight thirty-nine Colorado Highway one oh three, as residential three, parentheses R three. And do I have a second?
No second.
A second from, I think it was Kate. And any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manful.
Yes.
Mayor Lieutenant Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
All right, well, thank you very much. Next up, is there, is the city attorney with us tonight? Hey, Carmen, welcome. Just wanted to check in and see if you had anything further for us tonight?
No, thank you, mayor and council.
All right, well, thank you. Andy, we have your report, and you've got a couple of requests for action.
Yes.
I'd like to have a motion on the first one.
I'll move to approve a proposal from Mammoth Moving and Rigging, Inc., in the amount of forty thousand dollars to relocate the stage in the East Field to the West Field. It's Shelley Quinn Park, from account number twenty-one dash zero zero dash sixty thirty-two.
Thank you, Kate. Do I have a second?
No second.
A second from Lisa. And any discussion?
How much is it to just re-move the stage?
It would be a lot more.
Okay.
It would be a lot more now.
Just five.
It's very substantial stage, you know, I have a much better appreciation for it. That being down there several times and seeing all of the ramps and all of the hookups and, and the timber that's in that stage, it's, yeah, it's.
You mean the metal cup?
It's solid.
What?
It was community built, it was built by community members.
We're getting another forty thousand dollars now.
All right, any further questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manful.
Yes.
Mayor Lieutenant Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. And next up, proposal from Chase Fabrications, do I have a motion?
I'll make another motion.
To approve a proposal from Chase Fabrications in the amount of twelve thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars
for the metalwork and welding related to the relocation of the stage from account number twenty-one dash zero zero dash sixty thirty-two.
Thank you, Kate. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Janine. And any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manful.
Yes.
Mayor Lieutenant Jeremy Jones.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. Andy, before we move on, just want to make, either of you had to check in, anything further to share with us?
Yes, we did just confirm the city council retreat on Friday, May sixteenth. And I also confirmed the location of the Tommy Dockers, the room is available at Tommy Dockers.
All right.
It'll probably be roughly nine to three, like we've done before, and we're going to get together with not Leah Paul, the regional manager of DOLA, to talk about the plan for the retreat.
Well, that's good. He has done a great job. Thank you. And then Guy, we have your, your report, and there's two requests for action. One is about the tier one energy, the Impact Assistance Fund. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the city to submit a tier one energy impact assistance fund, EIA grant application amount of two hundred thousand dollars for the design and engineering related to water and sewer infrastructure improvements on Virginia Street and Avenue of Virginia Canyon Road. The city's match would be a minimum, let's say, the city's match would be a minimum of two hundred thousand dollars for a total project budget of four hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you, Janine. Do I have a second?
I will second.
A second from Lisa. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Good Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manful.
Yes.
Mayor Lieutenant Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. And then Guy's second request for action, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the city submit a congressionally directed spending request for two million dollars for the primary goal to design, engineer, and construct a pedestrian bridge over Interstate seventy and exit two forty.
Thank you, Lisa. Do I have a second?
No second.
A second from Jeremy. And any discussion?
Is this, would this be, is this the estimated amount of, like, the whole thing? Oh, I was being really hopeful.
Let's get us started.
Yeah, where I, last I heard, we were thinking about five million dollars.
Yep, that's right. Pretty good screen.
Do we have any kind of, any kind of cooperation with the other stakeholders that would be very affected?
You mean like the school?
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they have written us letters of support. We have continued to get letters of support from Congressman Joe Negoose, and I, I believe also Senator Bennett has given us a letter of support in the past. And so, we have sure given it the old college try.
Has anyone else other than us attempted to find grant funding for this, or any kind of funding for this? Or did this just land on our plate and we took it over? I'm a little, I'm a little upset about this.
Well, in all honesty, I think it would be appropriate to say that we have taken the lead. Um, it, it is in our backyard, and since a lot of our children are the ones that are actually walking.
Oh, no, no, I, I.
It just made sense for us to take.
I would agree with you. I do not disagree that we, you know, if nobody else is going to pick this up, we absolutely should. Because even though I don't have kids that walk over there, it scares the bejesus out of me with those littles, you know, walking across the set, uh, the one oh three bridge. But I'm just, I am, I will remain disgruntled that they are the ones that are carrying the banner for this.
Yeah.
Full stop.
Especially when we have so many other projects that we will be asking for money.
Yes, like, we're not the.
It doesn't matter.
No.
Baton switch.
It was a big baton switch on that one. Um, I just wanted to know like where we were with this and where we were the primary bus driver. Were, were we sharing driving duties?
Well, you know, uh, I, I think Andy is going to agree with me. Congressional directed spending uh is kind of a more of a hail mary, particularly, particularly right now. I, I think that's a fair statement. Um, but you know, you have to try because there, there is a very real need right there.
Absolutely. Or we need a Mary Poppins, lighting over the road.
Well, thank you. Thank you for indulging my question because.
Uh, it was a good question. Uh, any further questions? Uh, all right. Well, we have a uh, a motion. Oh, yes.
You're right.
We have a motion and a second, and uh, since there are no further questions, I would ask for roll call, please.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Mayor Lieutenant Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
Uh, Dylan, uh, staff report, uh, excellent, very detailed. Uh, just wanted to make sure you didn't have anything further to share with us tonight?
Wanted to note two quick things. I want us to just, you haven't read Maria's report on our new policy of naming projects. It's a really interesting read. I just think it'll be a really good thing moving forward. So you'll start to just see, you have a conditional use permit. It might say CUP twenty-five dash zero one. And it's just going to be quite helpful for record keeping as well as for, for just keeping things in order. And the other thing I wanted to note is we are working right now. Rick Wells, when he's giving his discussion, was about mailing lists and things like that. That we do have the ability to do better alerts than we currently do. It's through this updated website, and I'm working on building out these specific, like, e-alert sections. For example, a Virginia Canyon Mountain Park alert. So if there's like a closure in the park or, or an important parking notification or something to go out, someone could just sign up for that one and say, I only want to hear about the mountain park. And we can have another one for road closures. And you could have one that's like a planning and zoning project.
Like a construction project?
Yeah, like I was thinking there could be like a public hearings notification sort of thing where it's like, if you just want to keep up on public hearings happening, we could have that sort of e-alert that would go to folks' emails. So that's, that's coming soon. It's a little cumbersome, so I have to create some sort of SOP sort of thing for the public to navigate it. But it, it can be a lot better than it, than it has been.
Do, do we currently have like uh, the, the capability that, um, let's just say these guys wanted to be alerted when a planning commission meeting was happening and they would get the agenda sent to them? Could they go into our website somehow and say, I only want the planning commi- commission agenda?
Yeah, that's, that's part of this alerts.
Is that the same thing that you're, that we're getting our agendas?
Exactly. So we have the ability to go onto that um, public portal, because you guys get the board portal. We can also look at the public portal and say, hey, I want to know about this and sign up. And then when any, anything gets created, then we'll alert them.
So I think, I, I think that we need to get that message out there because, I mean, the idea that we're going to hand walk, I mean, that area is so small or such a small neighborhood, it's easy to inform them. But you're talking about nine hundred people, and we have the canvas. It's a little bit different.
Well, and I just, I, I gave a note to, to Mr. Wells to say, I will show you how to sign up for planning commission updates and council updates. It's not a perfect system because it's a little cumbersome, but we can make it easier. And um, I think that's helpful because obviously, until you have something within, within the under feet of you, you know, by state, overall, they require just have two weeks' notice. So the mail, the speed it is, it might take for to go from that post office to.
Right.
The P O box might be a week. And so.
We probably should have told Rick that too, that, that nothing was going to be public until it was done. So.
But, but with that said, another thing that I'd like to do that a lot of places do is have like a running list of active projects under review. And that plays into that whole CUP twenty-five dash zero one. It, it'll be easy to put on the website now that we have these, you just put a list that says active projects, and it would just say like, start date is this, public hearing date for planning commission is this date, and you T V D. And then you, once it's there, you add it in. And then if someone's like, oh, I'm interested in this, then at least once you know that it's there, you can say, all right, I'll monitor it every few weeks.
Right.
And then it still is on them to make sure that they're being aware of what's going on in the city. But there's a clearinghouse of saying, here's all the things happening just in case you missed it. So I'm working on that over the next.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I do want to say out loud, it is on the resident and citizens to educate themselves. And I, I know it sounds like I'm pushing it off on them, but it's your responsibility that where you, when you live somewhere, you evaluate the land possibilities around you and you make decisions about where you purchase your houses as well. So informing yourself of upcoming meetings is a good way to help process things that goes forward.
Thank you, Kate. Uh, any further uh, questions for Dylan? Uh, hearing none. Uh, Chief, another great report. Uh, thank you. I just want to check in and see if you have anything further to share. All right.
Um. Mary?
Yes.
I think you skipped Wonder.
Yeah.
You skipped over Wonder.
Uh, you know what? That was intentional. No. Thank you uh for catching that wonder. I apologize sincerely. And uh, did you have anything further uh for us tonight?
Mayor, I do not.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. Uh, same, we were communicating some.
Can I ask a question, Chief?
Sure.
Before we move on. Chief, um, have, have you been, has code enforcement been being more, was, you said on your abandoned vehicle parking places, code enforcement been um, more focused on abandoned vehicles?
Let's see, I, I, yes, there were, I think today he, he tagged, I think, three vehicles today. I believe there was a vehicle towed last week off Colorado Boulevard. So I would say yes.
Okay.
I would also say uh, twenty nineteen, two nineteen Colorado Boulevard has done an amazing transformation. I don't know if you've noticed, but I would say next time you're down at the West End, two nineteen Colorado Boulevard has had a major, major cleanup. And uh, yeah, so uh, anyways.
I was just going to say, that's the library's address. I was like, what?
I mean, no, yeah, sorry. It's, it's, it's two nineteen. Um, any further questions for Chief? All right. We'll move to Public Works. Uh, Paul, thank you for your report, and you have one request for action. Uh, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the uh Courtney Riley Cooper Parks Maintenance Contract for the twenty twenty-five season to Granite Properties, this is LLC in the amount of twenty-three hundred, I'm sorry, twenty-three thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars and five cents from line item ten dash sixty dash fifty-one zero eight.
Thank you, Kate. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Janine. And uh, any uh, discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Mayor Lieutenant Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
Uh, Paul, anything further to share with us tonight?
Um, everybody's favorite little gas station that was right there in front of Allied has been demo.
Oh, yeah.
The little gas station's gone already.
That just happened today?
Yeah, it, it only took him like thirty minutes.
Ah, I was like, I just drove by.
Did they actually use heavy equipment or did they just push?
Holy, holy, great. No way.
And that was, I just wanted to add that in. It got torn out there. Uh, thank you very much.
Lots of people live in those gas stations. Well, I just assumed everything was.
Yeah.
I remember one of the gas stations.
And it was a propane company, and it was a used car lot for a little while.
Don't they have a certain amount of time to get the tanks out of the ground?
I didn't know the, the access is to the tanks, the, the holes there. But it, I don't know if they had to remove them or if they could fill them. So there's potential that they were just filled and gapped.
More surprises.
Well, council, I, I've got to apologize uh for the buildup in the past. But uh, tonight, we finally get to it. Uh, Ed, would you please uh discuss a little bit about the award?
You know, we've got, we've won the uh Colorado Rural Water Association Plant of the Year.
What?
And although Ed likes to share the credit, which is very noble of him, uh, he is officially referred to now as the winner.
The winner.
Which we always do.
Right. Uh, I did, I did go down there and accepted the award. Good deal.
Congratulations.
I'll send the victory.
Congratulations and uh, thank you. Thank you very much. But then, you know, I can't do it without my team. Yeah. And I couldn't do it without like Andy giving you the chance to, this is for Bennett or L R C or uh, Wonder doing the stuff that she does when I come in and bother her all the time. Or Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
All right. Well, thank you very, very much, Ed. Anything further to share with us tonight?
No.
As if that wasn't enough?
I, I don't have anything else. Thank you.
All right. Thanks a lot. Um, you know, uh, next up, we have a mayor and council, and I would like uh to hear from anyone that uh has anything special. I'd like to kick it off with Janine.
Yeah, I just want to remind everyone that the Gayle to the Rockies opioid council listening session is this Thursday at the Health and Wellness Center over here. It's going to be from twelve to one, and um, they're just looking to hear community concerns around substance use addiction and recovery. So, bring it out there. Um, also, quick update on the Housing Authority Board I'm sitting on.
Yeah.
We're just still in the very basic steps of like trying to like pass bylaws and figuring out the public notices about that. Literally like getting an address, getting registered with the state, getting a bank account, which is why we felt we didn't have the capacity to take on that grant. So very kind of basic still, but we've got a due list. We're working on it um, and hoping to pass bylaws in our next meeting April seventh. So, yeah.
Do you anticipate that they should be uh up and functioning by the summer?
I think so, yeah. I mean, I think we should have all the basics done in the next kind of thing after bylaws is putting out um, the ad to hire an executive director. At the same time, we also applied for a planning grant who would help kind of bring someone on to just do the, the, the initial kind of planning, development, strategic planning. As, yeah, I, I just never been involved where I'm like, oh, we don't have P O box. Like, we're like right at the beginning, but um, it's cool.
I just met a guy that's running for uh state treasurer at the, at a meeting last week, and I, I hooked him up with Amy, John Mikos, Mikos, Mikos. Um, he wanted to talk to the Housing Authority because apparently it's a big deal at the state level. So hopefully that will turn into something if he gets elected and we'll see.
How is it a big deal at the state level?
Well, they want housing. They want to develop throughout the capital of the state. So um, he was like, he was like, what is the biggest issue in Lakeview County? That's all I could think of.
Housing shortage?
No, good luck. Go together.
All right. Uh, anybody have anything further before I adjourn? I would like, oh, yes.
No, I do not.
Oh, yeah. I would like to mention, uh, it's not in our pack, but I think we have our next uh meeting on April seventh. Is that right?
Uh, fourteen.
Uh, fourteenth. Thank you.
Wow.
The way the calendar falls, the thirty-first is next Monday.
Okay, April fourteenth. It is. All right. Well, thank you very much, everyone. We'll call adjourned at eight fifteen, and everybody have a good night.